First order of business, we have the invocation by Commissioner Shalafant and the pledge by Commissioner Little. Please stand.
Oh, Lord, open our eyes to see where you would lead us. Awaken our hearts that we would hear your voice guiding us. Inspire our minds that we would comprehend your love for us. Listen and soften our hearts that we would offer grace to all. We ask in the name of thy son, our Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have roll call. There we go. Record to roll, Ms. Anderson.
You're called, President.
All right. Next, we have approval of the minutes September 8th, and I believe they were mailed to each commissioner. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Dwight Jones. Any deletions or additions to those minutes? I see none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have introduction of the Highway Commission minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Herbert. Commissioner Green, second. All in favor of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are adopted. We do not have citizens communication tonight. Because no one signed up. Next, we move on to communications and messages. We have three late file resolutions.
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. Okay. They all are on appropriation.
Yes, fourteen is on the agenda.
Okay. Resolution 101414 is in your packet on the agenda. Resolution 101415 is at your desk. 101416 and 101417. If there's no objections, we'll hear those in that order. I see none, so we'll...
Just as a point of clarification, seventeen is on their desk, but it did not have a number at the time we copied it.
Okay. Seventeen is on your desk, but it didn't have a number, so I don't know if y'all heard that or not.
It's relative to... Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's about DUI grants, about $325,000, so... Okay. Next, we call on Mayor Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have Commissioner Jones come down and do the honors on the first one. And I have Mr. Anderson in the back from the Great American. Let Ricky read this.
Proclamation declaring November as the Great American Cleanup Month in Williamson County. Whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful's mission is to partner with volunteers to keep our community clean, green, and environmentally aware. And whereas Keep Williamson Beautiful is celebrating its 14th year of participation in Keep America Beautiful's Great American Cleanup, which takes place from November 1st through November 30th, 2014. And whereas the Great American Cleanup is a platform for the wide range of initiatives embraced by KAB's missions such as litter cleanups, litter prevention education, recycling drives, graffiti removal, beautification and community improvement projects, park renewals, clothes collection programs, and waste stream cleanups. Whereas the caring citizen volunteers of Williamson County, Tennessee are committed and proud to do their part to sustain and improve the quality of life in Williamson County. And whereas working together to clean and beautify our county helps build pride in communities, create cleaner environments, foster economic development, and change the behavior that causes litter, now therefore be it resolved that I, Rogers Anderson, Mayor Williamson County hereby proclaim November 2014 as Great American Cleanup Month and encourage all citizens of Williamson County to join in activities that promote responsible environmental stewardship and help us renew our commitment to building a better world tomorrow and for future generations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. (applause) Thank you very much for your support and of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Williamson Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next one we have, if I could, Holly Ruskin and her children are here, and I'd ask them to come up so that we can present this proclamation to them. And I told her as soon as we did this that I would let her go so that her children could do their homework.[405.65][405.65](laughter) She was excited the boys didn't have a lot to say.[409.28][409.28](laughter) An estimated one-fifth of all Americans are affected by dyslexic, a language-based disorder which is characterized by difficulty with a single-word decoding. And whereas it can affect a person's ability to read, write, and spell, as well as a person's ability to put things in order, follow instruction, and differentiate between left and right. And whereas proper diagnoses, appropriate instructions, hard work and support from their family, their teachers, their friends, individuals can excel in school and later as working adults. And in an effort to assist parents, educators, and individuals, the International Dyslexic Association is designating October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. So therefore, it be resolved I as the Mayor of Williamson County to hereby proclaim October 2014 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. And I want to thank Ms. Ruskin for coming out and representing the association. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. As he's, as the mayor stated, one in five people are believed to have dyslexia, and it's so important to have the proper instruction and support so that these people can learn and excel in the world. And we appreciate the mayor acknowledging this and the help that Williamson County Schools is doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on, Commissioner Greg Lawrence has a few words. Like I said...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take a couple of minutes just to thank everyone who came out last month in regards to resolution on Yes on One. One of the things I was thinking as I watched that debate is what a privilege it is to live in America where we can have a public forum like this, and because we have First Amendment rights, we can come out to a debate and we can all share our views on, from different points of view. But the debate took a turn that went far beyond the spirit of the resolution and became a distraction to the commission and also to the Yes on One campaign. And after talking with the leaders of the Yes on One campaign movement, we decided to pull that resolution tonight. There's a letter in our packet that asks the question, why would you bring this resolution? And I'd like to take a minute to answer that question. And the answer is quite simple, because it affected public health. If I was to take a poll of everyone in this room, I think that 100% of us would agree that public health is one of the most important things that we do as a county commission. In fact, I would submit that it is the most important thing that we do as a county commission. What else do we do that's more important than protecting the lives and the health of our citizens? And so I brought the resolution because there are women from our county who are choosing to have abortions that are going to clinics in Tennessee that are unregulated, unlicensed, and are uninspected. And most of them don't understand this, and they don't know this. And so one of the purposes of the resolution was to raise the awareness level. And I think we accomplished our mission with the resolution. And so I want to thank all of you for your input on that, and I want to thank the chairman for giving me a few minutes to speak on that tonight.
Thank you. Also, we received a real nice letter from the Brandon Ryan family, and if you'll... I'll read it here. "April and I wanted to personally thank each of you for your recent generosity. The dinner with hometown hospitality was appreciated more than you know. The ability to take an evening off from working was wonderful considering how sleep-deprived we have been lately."[657.85][657.85](laughter) Is he awake? Yeah, okay. "I look forward to working with y'all over the next four years. Respectfully, Brandon Ryan." So it's here, up here on the desk, if you'd like to look at that and appreciate that. Next, moving on to reports of county offices. County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Can we have another proclamation?
No, I'm sorry. That's been pulled till next month.
Mr. Chairman, you might get both of...
It scratched off on mine. I assumed it was on everybody else's. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you might get both of those new county commissioners up. Well, not new, but twin Commissioner Williams and Ryan, they both got brand-new babies. They may be leaning on each other before the evening's over. Probably both of them are not sleeping. Let me have Nina come up and give you a snapshot of the county's financial issues.
Tonight in your packet, I have your reports that we go over. We have the budget report for the month of August. There's nothing out of the ordinary to report to you on that for the revenues or the appropriations. Also in your packet, I have your Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center reports. I included the July report again, along with the July report that we did not have from Davidson Management Group last month. They took over on the 25th, so we had a few days from them, which actually reported $14,317.05 in a profit. And I also put at your desk a new yearly total that reflects that netted value for the month of July. Also in your report is the August Cool Springs Conference Center. The county received $16,435.08. Also this month is your privileged tax report, and we had overall collections of $1.1 million for the month of August. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Nina? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, unless you have questions specifically addressed to me, I'd like to call upon, through the efforts of Kathy Montgomery, our doctor, our public health physician for services areas, Dr. Lorraine McDonald. Many of you know her. And with all of the information that's out with Ebola and some of the other things, we thought it would be good for her to come down and give you an oversight and an overview of how those issues are being handled at the public health area, and then let you address any questions that you feel free that you'd like to ask her. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Dr. McDonald to come up.
Sure.
We with the Department of Health have been fairly proactive in this situation. I know everyone's heard everything there is to hear about the CDC and the current situation in Texas, which was unfortunate. To be honest, the best thing we can do is contain and isolate individuals, and that's what our mandate has been. That involves a lot of different agencies and a lot of different people, as you can only imagine. We have been very proactive in doing tabletop exercises at all our health departments. I think Commissioner Dreisner said today that of the counties, we're at about 48 have already completed their training, and every day, there's several going on. We involve, that involves a lot of other groups, including law enforcement, EMS, hospitals. We've had, and I'm sure if you've watched the news this weekend, we had a situation in this region where an individual showed up at a hospital and claimed to have been a contact to someone from Africa. She turned out, after a lot of drama, that there was no real contact there, but it was a good opportunity to see how, who got called, who responded, how it was managed. An individual then presented at another hospital the next day, and that's been taken care of. So I think from our point of view, as we go along, it's probably a good thing that these are not actual cases, so we can practice and see what we could do better. I'm pretty confident that we're going to handle things appropriately. Most of, all of our agencies, as I said, have done tabletops, and we're continuing. I think Williamson Medical Center is soon to have theirs, and that will involve a lot of different agencies as well. The situation is unfortunate in Texas. The individual who cared for the first patient that passed away, it's unclear, and it's still unclear, what, whether there was a breach in protocol with the donning or doffing of the protective equipment. That's complex. It's something that you have to do all the time to get good at it, and that's another thing everybody is starting to kind of work on practicing. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions anybody has. Yes?
Commissioner Bay. Chairman, who's in charge?
Of, at which level?
At the top.
The CDC, the CDC Director, along with...
I'm not real smart. What does CDC mean?
Oh, the Center for Disease Control in Atlanta.
Okay.
And so they're really running the show, although we're in close communication with them. And the way it works is that the CDC in Atlanta, every health department, including ours, we have a CDC representative in every one of our health departments, a disease investigation specialist. Williamson County, next door, has one. I'm at the regional office here in, it's in Davidson County, although that's not one of my counties. I have the 12 counties around. We have a CDC individual, and just to give you an example, the other night, we got a call from one of the local hospitals. It said, we have an individual here. There's an infection control nurse at every hospital, and that's, in my opinion, one of the most important people. They're the first-line person who will get an infected communicable case of anything, be it meningitis, or measles, whatever. She immediately calls us, our CDC person on call, who immediately calls me, and then I have individuals that I call in my line of command to make sure that everyone's aware, including our public, our information officers, just to give them a heads-up. Then we speak with our downtown people who have analogous positions, and then we proceed in a hopefully straightforward and organized manner. However, the hospital called a lot of people, so I think everybody who was anybody got involved in it. But we worked through it on a very, in a very organized and straightforward way. But we feed back information to the CDC constantly. Any other communicable disease, measles, has been an issue recently. Those samples that we gather go to our state lab. We talk to the CDC, and we transfer the samples to the CDC for analysis. So we, the whole key is communication. And it was a little bumpy. There's a few bumps in the road the other night, but we've ironed them out, and we've had lots of conference calls today to move forward.
Commissioner Sturgeon.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you tell us definitively how this disease is communicated? I've heard differing information.
And that was a long discussion today with the CDC on the conference call that we had. People are very concerned that it's airborne. There is still no evidence that there's any airborne element. Flu is airborne, seasonal flu. We cough, droplets come, we inhale the droplets. There's no evidence that this is transmitted that way. Body fluids, definitely. It's not a hardy virus. It can live on people's clothing. However, it's very amenable to hand sanitization, bleach cleaning, that kind of thing. It's not, it's not as communicable as we all believe, possibly because of the press. In West Africa, a lot of individuals who have contracted the virus can't get care. Families take care of them. The virus, as you get sick, or more and more virus is in the body. If you vomit, if you urinate, fecal contamination, people clean up after their children or after their loved ones, and that's how they contract it. Personal protective equipment isn't common in some of these villages, and there's just not the hospitals to manage them. So we have a huge advantage here in this country because we're way ahead of the game in terms of protecting ourselves. It's a virus just like any other virus, except for that it's got a huge fatality rate because the treatment, there's no vaccination, as you know. And I always say, two weeks ago, I was saying only one person in the United, nobody in the United States has died of Ebola, and now I have to say one person has died. But 3,500 died last year of the flu, so it kind of keeps it in perspective. But we have to contain it. The CDC has really stepped up their efforts to screen people on airplanes. People are asymptomatic for about four days before they get a fever. You cannot get Ebola from someone who does not have a temperature. The fellow that...
Does not have a what?
Temperature. Who does not have a temperature. Unlike the flu, you know, I can have the flu right now and not know it, and I can actually contaminate people for a day or more before I have symptoms. Ebola, you have to be sick. So that's an advantage in some ways. However, if you're on the airplane for four days of an incubation period, and you get off and you're fine, and then develop a fever like this individual in Texas did, there's that, nobody on that airplane is going to be infected, but you can get into the country with no fever. There's screening now on the plane before you get on. There's screening before people get off the plane now. There's a long, complex questionnaire. I understand this individual that has recently died misrepresented every answer on the questionnaire. So that's a difficulty. But if we can isolate folks, we can get ahead of it. It's scary.
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Okay.
I've heard nine days.
If you could, tell me what that means. I mean, the exposure period?
I think if you're, I'm not sure what the nine days is, but the, if you look at the incubation period, if I were to be exposed today, it's zero to 21 days. After 21 days, if you don't develop a fever after exposure, you're not going to have the disease. Most common, and this is where the nine might have come in, between day four and 10 is most likely when people who are infected will get their fever. And that's when they start, well, they start becoming communicable as soon as they get a temperature. And as a virus reproduces and reproduces and reproduces, it has more likely to spread.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got at this time, unless you have questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I was wanting to ask you a question, and it's a topic that is becoming a concern for a number of people within the 11th District, and frankly, one of mine as well, in that regards the strong growth that we're seeing within not only Williamson County, but particularly Franklin. And as you know, the traffic up and down Columbia Avenue is excessive, to say the least, during the day. Our friends with the city have just recently approved additional apartments to be built off of Columbia Avenue. Are there any conversations between your office and the city, at least expressing the concerns that the county has in terms of this unbridled growth we're having right now?
The long and short answer of it is, Commissioner, is yes. There are meetings trying to occur to address a lot of the traffic issues, but as you know, the business up and down that particular corridors, until you get out past Winstead Elementary, that would be all city's jurisdiction out through there. There's a group of people, lots of different groups, addressing traffic in Williamson County. Part of that is being done at the regional level, the mayor's caucus, that the mayors, we get together once a month and talk about different regional issues, and transportation is certainly one of those higher issues that are up there on the board. Ken Moore, Dr. Moore, is the chairman of this particular commission, so he is working frantically trying to figure out some solutions. I will not speak for the city in how they do their planning and how they okay their different programs throughout Williamson County. But there's hardly any place in Williamson County government, or Williamson County, that you're not affected by traffic by something else that someone else does, whether it's on Hillsboro Road, is in the 8th and 9th District, or it's out in the Flat Creek area. They may not have as much traffic out there, but they do come into town. And I-65 is trying to digress a little bit. The interstate is supposed to have the bridge up to help that corridor out through there by, around Thanksgiving. I think until people, you and I, and many people watching this show, start expressing themselves to commissioners and aldermen how they feel about growth, most of us have taken the position, and I have been there for a long, long time, that I'm very pro-business. But with the avenue of businesses coming down the pike, new people moving in, as you will hear from Dr. Looney, schools continue to flourish and grow. We're building two currently. I think that the road system has to be addressed in a different way than we have currently been doing it. Columbia Avenue, for the most part, though, is a state road. I'm not trying to push the blame off all on the state of Tennessee, but because they are doing a lot of projects in our county. Up in the Brentwood area, they've got Concord Road tore up. You haven't driven up there lately, trying to solve some solutions up there. You can't get from one side of the road, you can't get from Franklin Road or the interstate all the way back over to Nolan'sville Road. If you look at the interstate, they've got a lot invested in that on I-65 North and South, and there are different other areas right here in Franklin. Yet in the county, we've got certain select areas. Some of you have brought them to my attention. If you live out in the Arrington area, where a couple of these gentlemen represent, and a couple more over here, the intersection there at Triune is a nightmare. Absolute nightmare in the mornings and the evening. But that's two state routes. You've got, Commissioner Lawrence has brought up the one-way bridge, the 1-1 tunnel out on Wilson Pike. All of us have probably been through that. How do you find a solution for that? Again, that's CSX, the state, the city, the county. We can all work together, and they're all over. Even some of our local roads, Eddie and I were talking about it. If you live on Sneed Road, I think the latest number is about 10,000 cars, 10,000 cars are going up and down that road. If you go out to Arnold Road, it's not much different out there. It's every pressure point that we've got, we've got issues with transportation. Now, it's a long answer to tell you that many of us are sitting in conversations, trying to find solutions for that, but we cannot, we do not have the money to address these state roads and the avenue that they need to be addressed, and so... roads and the avenue that they need to be addressed, and so that falls back on the State Department of Transportation. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll call on Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today, we do not have school. We'll return to school tomorrow, weather permitting. I know that we have thousands of students that are following me on Twitter tonight to see if there's any chance that we will not have school tomorrow due to the flooding. I have staff looking for pontoons to attach to school buses to make sure we do have school, so sorry, boys and girls that are watching. Things are going very well in the district. You probably have heard in the news that we do have now official word that we have three schools that have been selected for Blue Ribbon Schools. Some of those staff members will be traveling to Washington, D.C. in the month of November to receive their official notification. We're very, very pleased with that. We also have two schools and the district that are finalists this year for the SCORE Prize Award, which is given to the highest performing school district based on some metrics that some independent folks put together. And so, we are very, very hopeful that we'll walk away with some cash awards from that. We'll be finding out for sure towards the end of this month. We do have one resolution for your consideration tonight. I hope that you view that favorably so that we can hire some additional staff for those schools that are struggling to meet with the increased demands, both due to growth and specifically to Fairview due to the fact that they're a focus school. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Smith?
I don't have a question for Dr. Looney.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Danner?
Yes. Hi, Dr. Looney.
Good evening, ma'am.
First of all, I'm so proud of Ken Rose Elementary being one of those Blue Ribbon Schools, having been a Ken Rose mom. I've been getting phone calls and emails a lot today, and I figure I'd give you the opportunity tonight to clarify on this meeting that apparently is tomorrow night, a Williamson County Parent School Meeting, is what I understand it's called. If you could just answer kind of the who, what, where, and why of it personally, and you are too, a Woodland Middle School parent, and I understand this meeting's going to be at Woodland Middle School in the theater that we voted on, and I've got some questions as to whether this is a proper use of government property, and that—I looked today as a Woodland parent for it on the Woodland site, the county site, and I didn't see anything on it. And so, my question is, who is the meeting for? Can I go as a Woodland parent? Is it excluding people? And if it's not, why isn't it on the website? And then, the what are you going to be talking about? I understand you're speaking at it. And why are you having it? Why not have it—at—you know, why not—I don't understand why it's not a Let's Talk Schools that's sanctioned by the Board and that's been approved by the Board. It just feels a little mysterious, maybe secretive. I don't understand why. I can't find anything about it when it's a Williamson County parent meeting.
Well, let me help you. I'm glad that you asked the question. As I always do, I get frequent contact from parents that want to meet and talk to me about issues and their children. And so, last week, I was contacted by a parent that specifically said, "There are a number of parents that want to talk to you about things that concern us in the district." And so, as I always do, I said, "Okay." And so, I suspect that the parents that want to attend that meeting will be there. I honestly didn't invite anybody. They called me and asked me to meet with them. I do that on a very, very regular basis. You know, last Sunday, I was at a meeting, a similar type of meeting. Why can't we not do that Let's Talk Schools meetings? Actually, I've been holding the Let's Talk Schools meetings for four years, and that's something that I created. And I'm hopeful with the new board that they will engage more in the process, because it usually has been me just engaging the community. Hopefully, that will change in the months ahead. So, whether you can come or not, if you're a parent in our district and have kids in the school, I'm sure you can come. I didn't organize the meeting. I was contacted by a single parent and asked to meet with me, and I will never turn down a meeting with parents in the district.
Who secured Woodland Middle School, then? Why not just meet them off-site?
I usually don't meet parents off-site. They either meet with me in my office, or they meet in their school or in a school. In this particular case, the parent said that there were over 100 people that wanted to talk to me, and so I looked for a venue that could seat 100 people that was not being utilized at the time.
So, you looked—the venue?
I chose Woodland Middle School, yes.
Okay. So, you secured the county—the why not run this by your board if you're going to use county resources?
There's no requirement for me to secure permission from the board to meet with parents.
In a school facility?
No, ma'am. They're parents of our students. Their kids go to our school.
I'm one of them. I'm just understanding why this wasn't made into a Let's Talk Schools. If you're going to use a county school, and there's going to be 100 people, then maybe it would be relevant to have it in a Let's Talk Schools environment. It just feels very odd to me that you would—you personally would secure a school facility for over 100 parents and not put it on the website, not make it a Let's Talk Schools. What are you planning on discussing?
I don't plan on discussing anything other than answering the questions that they pose. I don't have a presentation for them. Once again, the parent that contacted me indicated that she and other parents wanted to meet with me about their concerns, and I believe that one of my responsibilities as a superintendent is to meet with parents of our students in the district when they request it. So, I think it's very, very appropriate for me to do that. It's not out of the ordinary.
You have no idea what you're going to talk about, and you secured a school theater to do it?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay.
Any further questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked—the chairman for a couple of minutes tonight. As chairman of the board of the Williamson County Convention Visitors Bureau, I want to thank Commissioner Green, Commissioner Beathard, and former Commissioner Hayes for their leadership on that board, along with about a dozen other people. And if some of you know, we've had some leadership change in the Bureau this year, and I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new president and CEO, Ellie Westman-Chin. She's fresh off the Governor's Conference on Tourism in Knoxville. We'll have some good news from that, so Ellie.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I'm so glad to be here and be with you all. As Steve said, I'm fresh off the Governor's Conference, which happened last week, and I've created a one-pager for you that Steve distributed to each of you because we came back with some great news. Williamson County maintains the sixth-place ranking in the state for economic impact on tourism spending, so we are excited about that. We're in good company after the big five with the Smoky Mountains, Knoxville, Nashville, Memphis, and Chattanooga. So, we were excited to be that. That is about a 6.7% increase. As you'll see on here, we have our economic impact, $382 million economic impact in 2013. That's a 6.7 increase over 2012. So, those are those visitors that are coming into town, staying in our hotels, going to the restaurants, going to the attractions, and spending money in our county. We love those visitors that come in and visit and go home, and new ones come in the next weekend or the next week. That creates about 2,900 jobs in the county, so it's very good that we have these type of opportunities for our residents. At the top, you'll see our Smith Travel Report. Right now, we're averaging about 76% occupancy each month. So, that means each month, our hotels are filled about 76%, which I think is great. We're over 2013, which is a 6.9 increase over 2012. So, again, we like to see those increases because they're spending money in our county, and we want them to do that. And I'm not going to go through everything you see here, but I did want to let you know where you can find us on social media. You can see some of the accolades that we've received in the last month or so through different publications, including a publication out of Germany. And then, very important, our sesquicentennial Battle of Franklin is coming up in early November, and there's a long list of activity happening around the 150th anniversary, and we hope you'll come out and see us and join in on the activities. With the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I was really excited to be at the Governor's Conference. It gave me an opportunity to meet a lot of people across the state. I was in Nashville 10 years ago, and now I'm back, and I'm thrilled to be back. But I just want to thank you for your support, because in a lot of communities, they don't get this kind of support, and they don't understand what tourism can mean for a county and a community. And I was really proud of our community and coming back, because what I've heard in other cities and counties and what they go through to prove what tourism means, it takes a lot of time. So, it's great to be here where there's so much support, because what we can do is really just concentrate on that marketing and sales effort to bring more people to Williamson County to visit the amazing attractions and communities that we have. So, thank you for your support, and if you have any questions, I'm here. I have got my business card. I'm happy to meet with you if you want to sit down and talk about a CVB and what we do, so please feel free to reach out to me. I'm so happy to sit down with any of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question.
All right, Commissioner Ford?
I hit the wrong button. I meant to push this request to speak now. I'm on the board. Thank you for being here. We're excited about your tenure here. There's a lot of smart, creative people that live in Williamson County, a lot of people very entrepreneurial spirit, and I assume they all watch our commission meeting, because what else would you do on a Monday night?
That's right.
If there were one whole, one thing that you, as the CVB director, could wish—and this is not a fair question, because I didn't prep you for this at all. If there is one whole, one thing that you wish we had, that you wish somebody out there would develop, somebody would—if there was an idea you could plant in somebody's mind, what would that be?
Wow, that is a great question, and I'm not sure I'm prepared with an answer. I did start at the end of July. Lots of things are rolling through my mind that I'm not sure is fair to say yet, because I'm still doing my research. But I will say this, and I think that everybody in this room should be proud of this. What brings people back to a community is a fresh community. It's the things that we have and the places that we're going. And I think Williamson County has done a tremendous job of staying fresh. So, for instance, the Leapers Fork Distillery. That's an attraction. That's going to bring people to Williamson County. So, right now, off the top of my head, I would say, if we can continue to work together on that growth, healthy growth, how do we maintain this amazing community that we have while growing at the same time? That's my first thought. But if you'll give me a month or two to give that a little bit more thought, I'll come back and give you maybe a better answer than what I just gave you right now.
We'll still be here.
Okay, great. Great question, though.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, first of all, I'd like to thank Deputy John Burks and Deputy Harold Reed and Sheriff Long for being here, providing security for us. Moving on to elections and appointments. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's back up. The Commissioner Danner's got a few words to say.
Just real quick, wanted to give a shout out. The reason I'm casual tonight and wearing this awesome new pink t-shirt is I got it from the—I want to give a shout out and thank the Volunteer Fire Department, Williamson County Volunteer Fire Department. I was invited to their meeting, and I have learned that all of you are invited to go to their monthly membership meeting. They have it the first Tuesday night of the month, I believe, at 7:00 at Station 14, which is the one next to Sweet CCs. I learned more in that meeting than I have in four years of committee meetings. It was highly recommended. I don't know if they'll give you a breast cancer t-shirt, like this one, but it was fabulous, and it's amazing how much of the county is covered and protected by volunteers. And so, I highly encourage you to go by.
Thank you. Next, moving on to elections and appointments. The Stormwater Appeals Board is—in the term is the duration of the county commission term. County Commissioner term expiring Cheryl Wilson, nomination Betsy Hester. So, I'll entertain a motion for that. Commissioner Beathard and Ryan the second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor of Commissioner Hester, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Congratulations to Betsy. Moving on, we've got Steering Committee Recommendations for 2014-15. Investment Committee, Rogers Anderson Chair, Tom Bain, Brian Beathard, Dwight Jones, Karen Parrish trustee. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Smith, Commissioner Danner the second. All in favor of the Investment Committee, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next, I have the Audit Committee with Commissioner Tom Bain, Judy Herbert, and Tommy Little. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Lawrence, Commissioner Hester the second. All in favor of the Audit Committee as presented, signify by saying aye. Opposed? It is approved. Next, we have the Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee. Ricky Jones, Dana Alsbrooks, Bert Chalafant, Betsy Hester, Tommy Little, David Payer, Matt Williams. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Bain. Mr. Dwight Jones the second. All in favor of the Law Enforcement Committee as presented, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they are confirmed. The Property Committee, Commissioners Brian Beathard, Kathy Danner, Travis Hawkins, Ricky Jones, Tommy Little, Steve Smith, Barb Sturgeon. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chalafant, Commissioner Ricky Jones the second. All in favor of the Property Committee as submitted, signify by saying aye. Opposed? They are confirmed. Education Committee, Brandon Ryan, Sherry Clark, Kathy Danner, Jeff Ford, Travis Hawkins, Matt Milliken, and Barb Sturgeon. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Kestner and Commissioner Beathard second. All in favor of the Education Committee as submitted, signify by saying aye. Opposed? They are confirmed. Public Health Committee, Dana Alsbrooks, Bert Chalafant, Sherry Clark, Jeff Ford, Betsy Hester, Greg Lawrence, and Barb Sturgeon. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Kestner the second. All in favor of the Public Health Committee, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Next, we have the Tax Study Committee. Commissioners Jeff Ford, Dwight Jones, David Payer, Brandon Ryan, Steve Smith. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Alsbrooks and Commissioner Chalafant the second. All in favor of tax studies, signify by saying aye. Opposed? They are confirmed. Next, moving on to Consent Agenda. And I believe on consent, the only thing we have is notaries. That's loaded on the machine. I'd need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Commissioner Chalafant. Commissioner Bain the second. So, if you're in favor of the consent agenda, push your yes button and confirm. We just met. Sorry, Linda. All right. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
24 ayes, 0 no.
Consent Agenda passes. Next, moving on, 10141. Resolution appropriating $150,079 from the general purpose school fund balance for additional Commissioner Brandon Ryan. Mr. Dwight Jones the second. School Board, I assume they were 12 for, 0 against. Education Committee?
Five ayes, 0 no.
Budget Committee?
Four ayes, 1 no.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is requested by the Board of Education. They are requesting approximately $150,000 for three half assistant principals. This is due to unexpected growth at Nolansville Elementary, Ravenwood, and Fairview, which is important to note that Fairview is a focus school. And currently, I believe that the school's fund balance stands at approximately $9 million.
All right. Any questions? Discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 10141, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23 ayes, 1 no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 10142. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Clerk and Masters budget by $10,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Herbert?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Milliken? Commissioner Milliken the second. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
This is money for software for the Clerk and Master's office. It is, the revenue is from the data entry fee, and it's $10,000.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-2, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution appropriating, Resolution 1014-3. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2014-15 County Clerk's budget by $30,000 for additional postage. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Herbert.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Green the second. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
This is additional $30,000 for postage where people are ordering their tags through the mail. And it's coming out of the general funds due to, I think the budget hadn't been increased a while, so it will have to be adjusted next year for this. But this is where they're using more money. They are charging $2, so the money's coming back from the person that the tags are ordered, sent to.
Okay. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-3, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-4. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Assessor's budget by $5,741.82 for educational incentive salary supplements. Revenues to come from state funds. Commissioner Herbert.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
This is grant money from the state for further education and training for the Assessor's staff. Doesn't cost the county anything.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-4, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-5. Resolution authorizing the county to enter into a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee, Department of Transportation, in appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Sheriff's Department budget by $66,999.98. Revenues to come from federal through state grant funds. Commissioner Ford.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith the second. Law Enforcement Public Safety.
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the annual DUI grant that we get through the state to help reduce the number of DUI events.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-5, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Matt? Yours didn't take. There we go. There we go. All right. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-6. Resolution amending the 2014-15 Solid Waste Department budget and appropriating up to $150,000 for the purchase of a new baler. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste fund balance. Commissioner Jones? Ricky Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Hester the second. Municipal Solid Waste Board.
It was unanimous, I think it was four, zero.
Okay. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
Our baler has just given out, and this was something that we would go, be looking toward next year. And we had some things that were already approved this year, and we're just swapping. We have a need, and we have someone here if you have any questions.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-6, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-7. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Library Budget by $15,633. Revenues to come from miscellaneous donations. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. Library Board, six, four, zero, against. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green.
Yes, these are various donations from individuals and cities being utilized for library collections and improve those in services.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-7, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution accepting a donation from Williamson County Animal Services Incorporated of $240. Funds to be earmarked for the provision of a part-time pet behavior, behavioralist, easy for me to say, for the 2014-15 budget year. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes. Human Resources Committee was four, four, zero, against.
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Move for approval. I need a second. Commissioner Payer? Okay. Now, Human HR Committee.
Four, four, zero, against.
Good, good deal. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, apparently we have some dogs who are misbehaving at the animal shelter, and they need, they need a therapist. And somebody has graciously donated the money for the therapy, the dog psychologist, so we can hire this person. We moved that for approval of that.
So you don't have to be crazy to be there.
Maybe you have to be crazy to be the psychologist.
There you go. We're not going there. Anybody got any questions about that? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-8, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-9. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant statement with PetSmart Charities Incorporated on behalf of Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center in appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Animal Control Budget by $9,750. Revenues to come from donations. Commissioner Herbert.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Green the second. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
This is a donation from PetSmart for animal control and will be used for supplies and materials there.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-9, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Next, we have late file Resolution 1014-14. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a grant agreement in appropriating and amending the 2014-15 General Sessions DUI Court budget by $69,996.40 for the DUI program. Revenues to come from federal funding through state grant funds. Commissioner Ford.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester the second. Law Enforcement Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford.
This is a grant for the DUI Court from the Governor's Highway Safety Organization.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-14, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution 1014- Resolution 1014-15. Resolution authorizing Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Incorporated on behalf of the Williamson County Animal Control and Adoption Center in appropriating and amending the 2014-15 Animal Control Department budget by $21,000. Revenues to come from ASPCA grant. Commissioner Herbert.
Five, four, oh, move for approval.
Commissioner Hester the second. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
I'd like for Laura from Animal Control to come up and tell us a little bit about this.
Good evening. This grant was a result of the Rachel Ray 100K Challenge that we did over the summer. We saved 903 lives, more than we did last year, which is a huge success, and we ranked second out of 50 shelters. So we earned $21,000, and this will be used to continue to save lives through adoption and live releases.
Very good. Any questions? I see none. Thank you. If you're in favor of Resolution, late file Resolution 1014-15, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late file Resolution 1014-16. Resolution amending the appropriations for the 2014-15 Physical Year Drug Control Fund by $12,000. Commissioner Herbert.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Dwight Jones the second. Law Enforcement Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
It was five, four, and zero against on the budget.
Oh, okay.
This is $12,000. They, it was anticipated revenue that they did not receive, so it's kind of going back until they receive, and it can be used.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-16, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Next, we have the one without a number. The resolution on your counter without a number is actually Resolution 1014-17. It's a late filed, 1014-17. Resolution authorizing Williamson County Mayor to execute a grant agreement with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration in appropriating and amending the 2014-15 General Sessions DUI Court by $325,000. Revenues to come from federal grant funds. Commissioner Ford.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Ricky Jones. Law Enforcement Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Okay. Explanation, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the first time we've received this grant. It's a brand-new one from the, from the federal government, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This $325,000 is the first of three, so the total grant's not, almost $1 million, $975,000 that we're getting from the feds. We're going to be able to use this to expand the capacity in the drug court, to be able to service more people through the drug court.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of late file Resolution 1014-17, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-10. Resolution amending the rules, regulations, and procedures of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners concerning the appointment of members to the Equalization Board. Commissioner Beathard?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Clark, second. Rules Committee.
Five in favor, zero against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Beathard.
This resolution concerns a language change made to how we appoint members of the Equalization Board. I know that Bobby Cook is here if we have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Brandon Ryan?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question for Bobby, if you don't mind. And Bobby, you'll have to excuse my ignorance. I've actually got two brief questions. What is the Equalization Board, A, and then I got a follow-up question, if I may?
Right. That's where your property's assessed, and you disagree with it, you can appeal that assessment to this board.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second one is in the wording of the, the final paragraph, where it mentions that three members are elected by the county legislative body at its April session. Is that, is that a state statute, or do we need, since we don't normally meet in April, do we need to move that to March or May?
It's a state statute, but we can actually do it a month later.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bain?
Yes, I was, what is the change in the language?
The language, actually, the way you appoint them has been correct. You appoint three, and then Brentwood appoints one, and Franklin appoints one. The language in the rule actually had you all appointing four, and Franklin appointing one. So when it was brought to my attention, I just figured we'd clean it up.
Follow up? You good, Tom?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-10, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 1014-11. Resolution accepting the donation of classroom furniture from the Small Arms Training School for renovations to the range on behalf of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Smith the second. Law Enforcement Committee.
Six in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero, against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got $399.28 worth of classroom chairs from the Small Arms Training School, and we'd like to thank them for their donation.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 1014-11, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 101412. Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into a long-term lease agreement with P&amp;H Properties LLC for use and operation of the material recovery facility. Commissioner Ricky Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Dwight Jones II. Municipal Solid Waste Board.
Four, four, zero against.
Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones.
I'll let Nancy Cyan come forward and briefly explain this.
Welcome, Nancy.
Our material recovery facility, it had a five-year lease on it. It was up for renewal. It had two more options for five-year terms. But the Republic Services that currently is leasing the property elected to not renew the, the contract. So we issued a request for proposal. We had three proposals, and P&amp;H Properties was the best, and we've elected to go with them. So this is to, for their contract for the next five years with the option of two additional five-year terms.
Any questions? Commissioner Smith?
Just, what is the new location?
It's the same location. It's just our material recovery facility.
Yeah.
It's on Century Court.
Right.
It's where, it's where the new baler that y'all just approved is going to go.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 101412, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 101413. Resolution to authorize the establishment of a policy and assessment of fees collected by the Williamson County Animal Control Department in the event a pet owner remedies violations pertaining to regulations of dogs and cats. Did I read that right? Commissioner Herbert?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Green II. Budget Committee.
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Herbert.
This is when a pet owner has a violation, and they issued a citation by Animal Control, it's $50. This is an agreement to make it $20 if they take care of the violation within 10 days. And it also helps the Animal Control from having to go to court about it, so it's kind of a win-win situation.
All right. Any questions? Discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 101413, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four, yes, zero, no.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the agenda tonight. Would there be any further business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.